So precinct three as we described is the only swing district in the Commissioners' Court. So what makes you and not any of your opponents here the best candidate to defeat the Republican opponent in the primary? And if you could be specific in your answer. And again, limit to two to three minutes if you can.
My name is Belinda Bolton and I think my answer to that question is that I've done it before. I represented House District 47 in the Texas House for two sessions. It had previously been for several cycles held by a Republican. It was an open seat. I was, it was definitely expected to be captured by a Republican again. But we worked hard, built a really strong coalition of folks across the district and we won. And we flipped it from red to blue, as they say. And so I think I have that experience. Along with that came representing a very diverse and not politically united constituency. And in my office, we put a high premium on constituent services as much as our legislative agenda so that we were able to serve all the people who live in the district. So I think I'm well positioned and well situated to flip the seat again, pick up the seat, and then provide that same level of constituent services to anyone in the precinct or in the county for that matter.
Good morning and thank you for the question. I think I'm best suited to represent this swing district because of the work I've been doing in the community and how I'm respected for that. I raised a family in the northwest part of Travis County, but my whole adult career has been spent working across the county for people from all different walks of life. And that has involved working with lots of people who live in the western parts of the county. I've never run for office before. I've never won an elected office. I've never lost an elected office. But I've been elected by my peers over and over again to get things done. My supporter list has people from all across the county working on big things. Movers and shakers, moms and dads, constituents, representatives of people receiving services across this community. My campaign is working really hard to educate voters on what I've been doing, what I believe, and what they can expect from me, what kind of leader I will be in the future. I think that people in western, whether it's northwest, southwest, and downtown. I mean, our precinct is not just western Travis County or southwest Travis County. It's Lago Vista and it goes to I-35. People want to see solutions to our big problems. And I believe I am the best candidate to bring this community together. You can see again, I'll refer to my supporters list on my website, to leaders across this community who are looking to me because they know me, they've worked alongside of me, and they are expecting me to be able to work with them to produce solutions. So I'm ready to go.
Thank you very much for having me here. Appreciate it. My name is Shiloh Newman. Why should I be Travis County Commissioner but be the person that you want to run against a Republican? Well, that's a great question and here's the answer. First of all, I've lived here my whole life. I've been in this community. I've lived in every part of Austin there is to live in. During that time, starting at the age of 10, I started in construction. I've been in construction and every part of construction my entire adult life. I have started numerous small businesses. I've employed hundreds of people in this community. The last 15 years, I've been part of the late Travis Youth Association. The last five years, I've sat on the board. The last three years, I've been president. My job is to provide 8,000 sports, and that number grows every year, for kids in that community. That kind of puts you in a position to look from that little scenario to a big scenario of providing different things for thousands of people. When I pull an agenda from the Commissioners' Tuesday meetings, right? And there's usually 30 or 35 things. I pulled lots of them, okay? When I pull the agenda and I look at all those things on the agenda, I would say 80% of the things on the agenda, I have a minimum of five years' experience in and up to 30 years' experience in. This is what I do for a living. I'm not a politician. I can. I've never run for anything. I've never been elected for anything. I'm not using this as a stepping stone. I've been here my whole life. My kids are going to bury me here, all right? I have no interest in being anything other than a Travis County Commissioner. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not a legislator. I don't want to write laws. I don't want to do that. I want to continue doing what I've been doing my whole life and that's building roads, okay? Dealing with infrastructure, dealing with utilities. I spent the last five years building a park out in Travis County, getting a bond pass, working with Gerald, okay? Getting the constituents out, getting people to show up to forums. And we got that bond passed and we're still working with issues on it. But I just realized, as Gerald said he was stepping down and the panic set in, my park's not done and all the promises that I've made to all the kids out there, I have to follow through. So when I said, "All right, I'm going to do this," and then I looked at what you have to do to be a Travis County Commissioner, I asked Gerald what he did on a weekly basis, on a monthly basis, on a yearly basis. I'm like, "I've been trained for this my whole life." Are you freaking kidding me? This is what I should do. I mean, and you, and voters, and everyone needs to sit and look and go, "Well, who's the best candidate for this job? Who's qualified? Who wants to do this job and this job alone?" Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Thank you again for having us here. I'm confident I'm the best person not only to win the primary, but win the general and to serve. I've lived in southwest Austin for 26 years and I'm also an honors graduate of University of Texas in the Law School. I practiced law, civil trial law in Houston in the 80s and early 90s, representing union workers who've been poisoned by asbestos companies. And we bankrupted a lot of those asbestos companies. 32 years ago, I started my own nonprofit called Service Dogs, Inc., which is similar to a guide dog school. And we help wounded veterans and Texans, other Texans with disabilities, build better lives. We do that free of charge and we've expanded to courthouse dogs, help abused children find their voice on the witness stand, and dogs that support our first responder community, whose rate of suicide has gone up to one a day. And three of those dogs went from San Antonio to El Paso the morning after the shooting and saw 2,600 community members over the next six days. I'm running to bring that kind of dedication and service and results to elected office. I have made my goal of outworking my opponents by already knocking on between 3,500 doors and 4,000 doors as of last March was when I started. That allowed me to distinguish our campaign by being the only one to file, to get on the ballot by using signatures from voters versus paying the registration fee. I'm here to address the issues that I've heard when I've knocked on those 3,500 doors and also made 10,000 calls to really be a good listener, which is essential to be a good representative. The people of this precinct want safe roads. They want their environment protected. I was the only person in this room who testified on this, I think December 17th, to Travis County Commissioners' Court, opposing the RV park that they want to build across the street from Hamilton Pool Preserve. I'm here to support our first responder community. The emergency services districts are under the county's jurisdiction. And when I've met with them, they want more of a say in their budget. They want to make sure they have the resources to save us when there's an emergency, including safe roads, adequate water, and also subdivisions that have entrances and exits. The bottom line is hard-working candidate, hard-working Commissioner.
We'll start the other direction now and so we'll go game of unions. You talked a little bit about this just now, but what are the most pressing issues in your district? Name one or two that people are talking about. And more importantly, specifically, how would you address those issues, that one or two issues?
Well, people are very interested in having their families and especially their children be safe on our roads. Highway 71, which runs through a lot of precinct three, in 2018 had seven fatalities. And at just one intersection, at Hamilton Pool Road, they had 66 collisions, which is more than one a week. I've met with law enforcement to discuss this. You cannot widen this road because of the topography, but you can make sure the paving is up to the way it's supposed to be. You can budget for more law enforcement. They wanted six more officers. They were budgeted four. You can advocate for reducing the speed limit. You can put in center turn lanes when it makes sense, make sure there's shoulders. Some of these roads just, if you get off the road, you're in a ditch. And also, my favorite traffic signal, the protective left turn, the green arrow where you know you're going to live. The other one is the environment, of course, which I've already mentioned. The proposed RV park across from Hamilton Pool Road is another example of carpetbaggers that this is being faced in all sorts of parts of precinct three. In addition to the precinct three issues, every, there are countywide issues that are very compelling because each Commissioner and the county judges 20% of the vote. Countywide issues like food justice, like criminal justice reform, like addressing climate change. I would like to see all of the county-owned vehicles converted to electric and sustainable energy, including supercharger stations being installed. And retrofit our buildings with solar panels and all the other things that can make them as green as possible.
I'm sorry, can I take like a 10-second break? I'm freezing and my campaign manager brought my other shirt.
Why don't we go on to Ann and come back then? Can you do that?
Sure.
Sure. So thanks. So, you know, top two issues, I think, for precinct three from knocking on doors and talking to people would be, I think, top of mind, especially with the Australia fires, is fire prevention. And it goes to the whole, all this stuff is tied together. I just, it's hard to separate any issues from the others. But, you know, we don't have much land use authority. We've got development happening everywhere, right up and against the Green Belt. But even neighborhoods like Jester Estates or Travis Country that are not new development, when you talk to homeowners there, they're talking about moving because of fire concerns. And so then we look at, well, how are we, what are we doing about fire? And, you know, we've got an inequitable situation in how our ESDs are funded. We've got, but a very, you know, well-to-do ESD in six, in Lake Travis. They're all going to have to help each other if we have a fire. When we had the Steiner Ranch Fire, it was also at the same time the Bastrop Fires were happening. There was only one fire truck to go to Steiner. You know, there, we, I'm just concerned, we are not prepared for a catastrophe. And so, you know, I think we need to be held accountable to know exactly what we need to do and figure out how to pay for it and do that. Again, you know, the Australia report said, "We knew this could happen and we've talked about it, but not done anything." And so, you know, we have got to get a handle on fire. And I would do a lot of that probably through land conservation. Because it seems like land conservation is just a win-win-win. It'll help us protect our water sources. It can help us protect against, you know, building in Green Belts where there's, which increases the fire hazard. And so I think there's a lot of work to do around fire. And it dovetails beautifully into the rest of our concerns for the environment. The second is transportation. And it's even related to fire because the fire trucks can't get where they need to go in a timely fashion because they're stuck in traffic. You know, there's so much talk right now about what the city and cap metro are doing. But there was a lot of talk yesterday about how the county's not doing enough. And we can't, and our people in, you know, again, we're downtown as well as western parts. But we've got to be a regional player. You know, what's happening in Williamson County? What's happening in Hayes County? What's happening in Burnett County? We need to know what they're planning. We need to plan together. And we need to expect Travis County to mature and be creative and collaborative on what authorities they do have so that we can be a player in transportation solutions. So those are my two big ones, fire and transit.
Thank you. The first thing that I think that I would like to accomplish, which would be hard, but it's kind of an all-encompassing thing. I keep reading stories about the city and Travis County. And it just seems like every single time there's an issue, whether it's the Expo Center or a transportation issue or, you know, Waller Creek, it's a fight, you know? How can we ever get anything done in a city that's growing as fast as we are when the county and the city can't agree on anything? The voters go out and pass a vote that they want the Expo Center remodeled, right? They want renovation done. By God, we need one. It is the worst Expo Center in the state, you know? And the city says, "Yeah, sure, maybe in 10 years or so," right? I mean, how does that work? I mean, I don't get it. You know, am I missing something here to where the voters can say, "Let's do this," and then the city council can get together and go, "Nah, not while we're in here." I mean, that to me is the biggest problem of why things can't get done when you've got a city council and a group of Travis County Commissioners who can't agree on anything. I mean, you know, kudos to Judge Echep for coming up with something creative, saying, "Well, what about a land swap?" You know? I mean, that worked for B caves in the city of Austin when they did that stuff with the bridge out there and, you know? But I just, it's got to be passed out. It's got to be more. It's got to be like true cooperation. And the people of Travis County and the city of Austin need to stand up and demand that there's cooperation. Because if you can't vote on something and get it passed and then nothing happens after that, I mean, what's the point of anything? It's just a big freaking waste of time, right? And then I'm just going to echo, you know, Ann and Sherry both on transportation for my second issue. I mean, living here my whole life, this is what we do here. We think, we go, "All right, we're going to build 360. We have all the land we need, right? Should have been a six-lane road right from the get-go, okay? And then people come out and say, "No, no, you can't for this. You can't for that." But everybody wanted six lanes, but we didn't do it, okay? We could have done it. No problem at that time. And now here we are going, "Four lanes, what do we do? Another Band-Aid, right? Another Band-Aid." That's what we do in Austin. We put Band-Aids on things, okay? We need to stop putting Band-Aids on things. And when we have a project, we need to do it right the first time. And everybody wants to do it, but there's always just a couple of people who object, you know? And then they'll make a big issue and then people will turn a little thing into a big thing. And so we create bad infrastructure over and over, my whole life, okay? 50 years almost that I've been here just watching one, not going to use that word, right? One thing after another, just done wrong. Why do we always do things wrong? Why do Houston and Dallas and San Antonio, why does San Antonio have two perfect loops around it? And we don't have one? Not a single functional loop? And the Capitol, for Christ's sake! Anyway, I'm not passionate about that or anything.
Well, I would echo many of the things that have been said. Traffic is a huge thing. You know, who amongst us has had a single dinner with anybody in the last however many years where we didn't talk about how bad the traffic was getting there or getting home? There are some things that we could do. We have a lot of choke points and congestion hotspots. And with not tons of money, I mean, we could leverage some dollars and address some of those things that would get traffic flowing better while we work on the Campo 2045 Plan and the county's transportation plan and the Cap Metro Project Connect Plan, all of which have great elements in them. So there are some things we could do in the shorter term, which would dovetail nicely with my, another key issue for me, which is the intersection between protecting our natural resources and being sure that we are prepared and able to respond appropriately to emergencies. So counties in Texas don't have the same ordinance-making and land use authority that municipalities have. It's what I consider a big flaw in our state, in our government, in our laws. And that's how we end up with problems like the one we're faced with at Hamilton Pool. Because there are limits to what the county can do under law to stop or even manage development. But the counties in Texas can do a lot of things to protect our natural resources, especially our water. And that involves protecting a lot of things about the watershed, the things that, like, for example, Lake Travis is the source of drinking water for over a million central Texans. And we need to be sure that we are protecting that vital resource because without that, we don't have any kind of quality of life here. And then we can put more land into conservation, which the county has been doing pretty effectively and aggressively, which is helping to protect our natural resources. And that then goes into the whole issue of disaster preparedness and emergency response. We need to make sure that our first responders, whether it's municipal fire and EMS or whether it's the emergency services districts, are adequately and equitably funded and resourced so that they can respond. We need to make sure that our neighborhoods understand. And we do more disaster drills like Commissioner Shea has done. I think that's a really good model. We deal with traffic so that emergency vehicles can get to where they need to go so that we can push response times down. I'm honored and thrilled to have been endorsed by the Lake Travis ESD, by the Oak Hill ESD, by the Austin Fire Department because of the work I've done previously when I was in the legislature around this very issue. But then also in working with them to address a lot of the concerns that we're hearing from our neighbors when we're knocking on all those, you know, tens of thousands of doors. You know, people are concerned and the inevitabilities of climate change are such that we are going to have more fire, more drought, more extreme weather conditions. And so we need a good disaster plan and we need to be ready to go and we need to have freedom of movement so we can get there.
So you get the next question?
Oh, boy. Okay.
At yesterday's Commissioners' Court meeting, Commissioner Dougherty talked about, expressed concern about whether the county should be getting into the public transit business. What role, if any, do you think Travis County should play in supporting and funding public transit? And again, we would limit the answers to two minutes.
I know, I've known Gerald, Commissioner Dougherty, for years and years. And I know that he's a much bigger fan of pavement than he is of transit and alternative transportation modalities like rail or rail. So I understand that he has concerns about that. We just simply cannot build roads fast enough to keep ourselves moving and keep ourselves safe. And as I recently asked someone who said, "Well, we just need to build another road." I was like, "And where would we put it? And what neighborhoods are going to want it coming through where they are now?" So I think that Travis County has a seat on Campo, of course. Commissioner Dougherty is currently in that seat. I think that we need to be an active and vocal part of Campo. And they have some very progressive ideas in their 2045 plan that they're developing. And I think that the county needs to be a big part of that. It's very regionally focused and I think that actually benefits Travis County. And I think we need to be a big part of talking about and working on how we implement Campo's plan, which is also dovetails well with the county's own plan and with Project Connect, the Cap Metro Plan, all of which have elements that are both county and regional in them. We are going to have to spend some money to make this happen. And nobody likes to talk about that, but there is, you know, there's no, there is no free lunch. And we're going to have to make wise investments. As I mentioned before, there are some things we can do that would be lower cost and less time, that would reduce choke points, that would make us move faster and be safer. And I think the whole issue of the city and county working together is also manifested in how strongly we work with Campo and with Cap Metro on these plans as the county and being a strong voice with them.
Thanks. As I said in my opening answer to your first question, Travis County must be a player in transit. We need to take a broad definition of the authorities we have. There are things we can pay for. There's a bus to Maynor. We could have buses moving back and forth, paid for by the county, going west. I think that we need to look at the needs of the whole community, of the whole county, and figure out what authority we have and leverage that with the authorities of the city as well as our neighboring counties. I mentioned Hayes earlier and Burnett. They're getting involved. You know, Hayes has more money now. Burnett has big ideas. The regional player, the regional leader is definitely the role for Travis County. And it matters who's at that table. You know, are they believable? Are they friendly? Can they get stuff done and bring others to the table? So the answer to your question simply is yes. We must be involved with transit. I think it's an old idea to think we're not. I would even assume the Republican candidate will support multimodal solutions. You know, so yes and yes.
Well, I agree with Ann. It's something that we have to be involved with. It's not a question anymore of should we. That's like trying to talk about, you know, is there problems with the environment? You know, I mean, come on, really? You know, I mean, my daughters are almost 18. She's a Republican. She talks about how the new kids that are coming up that are Republicans today, they've grown up doing research, not watching news. So they all agree that there's problems with the environment. So to say that, you know, it's a Republican or a Democratic thing, whether Travis County needs to be involved in transportation or mass transit is a question that is, you know, gone, in my opinion. We all have to be involved with transportation. We all have to be involved with mass transit. Again, the Band-Aids must stop being put on. We have to do hard things. We have to make difficult, hard decisions. The 3.5% cap rate does not help us either. So, you know, how are we going to do these things? It's easy for me to sit here and say, "Yes, we should be involved. We should do mass transportation. And we should spend $10 billion on a light rail." So where's all this money coming from, right? In the end, you know, we all have to sit in a room. And when I say "all," I mean, city council and Commissioners. When are we going to have that meeting monthly? When is that going to happen? Because when that meeting happens, when the city council members and the Travis County Commissioners can like work together, whether it's monthly, quarterly, you know? You're going to see things change because it doesn't matter what one side does if the other side's not cooperating.
One of the things I can bring to this issue is 25 years of legislative experience at municipal, state, and the federal level, starting in '95 when I wrote, helped write some statutes that expanded the rights of people with disabilities to have public access in the state. To last November, when I met with employees of the Department, US Department of Transportation, because we're rewriting the Air Carrier Access Act, which governs people traveling on airplanes to sort out the service dogs versus the fraudulent dogs and the other animals. When I have researched this issue, I also spent some time with people from the Texas Transportation Institute, which is a wonderful resource. Our legislature created it in 1952 and it's a bunch of smart, aggy engineers. So mass transportation and the leading edge of transportation is important. The thing that came, that stood out last night wasn't whether we need to be involved or not. And by last night, I mean the newscast with Commissioner Dougherty's comments. It's how are we going to pay for it? And I would oppose raising property taxes to pay for that because everybody's already squeezed on that. But I would be in favor of having a bond election because that way the people will have a voice in whether they want it or not. And everybody can advocate for why they think such a bond would be helpful or not. And then the decision is in the hands of the people.
Just a quick follow-up. The New York Times has listed the Austin-Travis County area again as a place to visit. They list 52 places to visit. I think we're number 27. And then there's a follow-up about how do you get around in these cool cities? You know, how do you visit cities? And it said, "Use the transit system. Use their trains." You know, people are expecting us to grow up and have You know, people are expecting us to grow up and have mass transit. I think, you know, that it's really cool to see what the city's considering that as we would bust the legislative cap of 3.5 and dedicate the money to transit. I think, you know, it might be cheaper that way. It gives the voters a voice, but yet it allows the money to be there so that we can plan and know we can deliver the entire, you know, vision. I think that's a pretty cool idea. I don't know too much more about it.
Right. Yeah. Amen to that. It pains me to know that Houston and Dallas are doing such a better job on this issue than we are.
And to go to Shiloh's point, you know, Dallas didn't do a subway underground last time. Now they're digging out to put things underground, and it's much more expensive. You know, we want to do it right the first time, just like you said.
I think we could go a full hour on this. How hard it is to get around.
We might move faster if we're from this way.
But I did want to get in question real quickly about criminal justice system and get your thoughts on what you specifically could do to improve our criminal justice system in Travis County. Again, be specific, and you could limit it to two minutes, your answer.
Well, our criminal justice system is, the new word of the day is intersectional with a lot of other issues. First, we're barely starting to look at having a public defender's office for adult defendants. And again, being inclusive, the defense lawyers have one opinion about that, the activists have another opinion about that, but you also have to get people who've been defendants and their families at the table. The way that this is intersectional with these other issues is food justice, not having access to healthcare in rural communities. Food justice means that there's not access to healthy food within a 10-mile radius. And if you go to the U.S. Department of Agriculture's Food Atlas and type in Travis County, everything East of I-35 lights up, which means people are getting their food at the gas station and at the dollar menu. With all the closings of clinics that serve underserved communities in rural areas, children are not getting nutritious food, and they're not getting preemptive healthcare. So they're not going to underperform in school and might even do something that a teacher considers acting up. We know statistically that children of color are reprimanded more harshly. Then they end up in juvenile detention center, which for years has been run by Southwest Key, the villains who bring us the child internment camps in Torneo, which I think is unethical to, for us to continue to do business with them, so I'm glad that's on the way out. But that's the school-to-prison pipeline that Sheriff Hernandez is always talking about. So criminal justice is, it's great if we can work with adult defendants, but we really have to start making sure none of our children are going hungry or malnourished and that they do have access to preventative healthcare. And that's the way you nip it in the bud instead of taking care of it when they're adults and they've had a history of doing the best they could. My nonprofit Service Dogs, Inc. had a program with Texas Juvenile Justice Department for four years called Paws. We had dogs on their campus or their facilities, children who went through a special screening program, got to live with the dogs and train them. And so when I went out there periodically over four years, you look at children and you say, "How did society and their family let them down where their best choice was to commit a felony?" And I still mentor some of the youth, as they call them, now that they're out. And this has got to start at childhood, not just trying to address it when it's become an epidemic when people are adults.
I would look to Sheriff Hernandez and her staff and team for counsel on this. From what I've read, there's problems there with the explosion of growth in the last 10 years. Prison's overcrowded. I believe there's a new prison on the table for women. And, you know, we seem a little bit divided on that, as we are on most money issues. In my opinion, based off what I've read, I don't see how we couldn't put a new prison in place. If we have problems now with the prison system and we're trying to build a new facility for it, you know, to see if we can get, you know, that passed or not, what is this problem going to look like in 2030? What is the problem going to look like in 2040? Are we going to come back 10 years from now and then do the same thing we always do with a major issue and go, you know, "Oh, we should have fixed that when it was on the table. Now what are we going to do?" What is the prison system going to look like that is so massively overcrowded that, you know, we have malnutrition and disease? What are the lawsuits going to cost the taxpayers? Because there's not enough room, because, you know, we can't do any kind of reform and rehabilitation in the prison systems because we're trying to deal with space. All right? So what may cost, you know, 70 or 80 or 90 million dollars now, could that end up, you know, being three times that much in lawsuits if we don't do anything 20 years from now? If we just keep adding on, put a Band-Aid on, more Band-Aids?
So I posted a criminal justice reform statement on my website. It was the first one that I put up there. And, you know, as a lawyer, advocate-type professional for people that, you know, have been, I've seen firsthand the result of our criminal justice system on people of color and people with lower incomes. Once you're locked up, it's hard to finish school, it's hard to get a job, it's hard to get housing. There's four things I would do. I would look to reduce incarceration. And there's a lot of problems in our jail, but there's a lot of vacant cells. And if we have cells, we're going to fill them up, and I would look to reduce the number of cells we have because that is a sure way to reduce incarceration. I'm not advocating for letting people who are violent run loose on our streets, but I would like to look at policy that reduces arrests of folks that are nonviolent offenders. And another way to do that is to not, you know, re-lock up people for the same offenses if there's other alternatives to help them pay back fines or meet the punishment they were handed out. So work to reduce incarceration. I would ensure fair legal and equitable legal representation of everyone. I support the public defender's office, and I would support expanding that if it's working, if we figure out how to fund it appropriately so it's good. I used to represent some kids at Gardner-Betts, and I trained and worked through the juvenile public defender. So I know the model we're talking about. A lot of those attorneys went in there with a huge box of cases. I want to make sure that everybody gets fair and strong representation before we think we should just make that the standard for everybody. You know, I mentioned reducing incarceration. I would look to shrink our correctional complex. Yes, we want to provide state-of-the-art, you know, rehab for women. We recognize there are differences between men and women, gender-specific harm reduction and, you know, job training and family reunification, but we need to be smart about that. I think the master plan for Travis County's correctional complex, if we did the entire plan, does shrink the number, but the first step on jail for women increases the number. So we got to know really what we're doing, and I am against increasing the number of cells. Two more important things. One is that local law enforcement be as well-trained as possible. And I wouldn't be governing what the sheriff does or what the police department does, but as far as the county budget, we could incentivize pay for sheriff employees by making sure they have access and complete certain training, harm reduction, undoing racism, gender-specific, the intersectional awareness that Sheri's talking about, and report out on the impact of these trainings. Last is to improve our response on sexual assault. Everybody, every victim needs access to immediate care and to good representation. We need to pursue these cases. I think that in Austin, Texas, with the technology and the medical sort of hub we've become, we ought to look at creating a regional crime lab right here with state-of-the-art technologies. So there is a lot of work to do. I'm happy and proud to be supported by folks, not only the two Sheriff Association, Law Enforcement Associations, but also people involved in justice reform and justice advocacy. And when you work on homelessness, it's part of the reason I got into this race. You know, I've seen too many people stuck in jail, not be able to get housing or jobs because of criminal history, but also a community that's willing to work with us to reduce the screening background for housing so more people can have access to housing. So it's big work. Transportation will also help people have access to jobs and housing and, you know, be able to do family reunification better, get families visiting their loved ones, which we know helps people get out of jail quicker. So there's lots to do, and it's all connected.
I have, along with all the topics we've talked about today, I also have information on my website on a platform around criminal justice reform. And I will say that a lot of, not all of, but a lot of my perspective on criminal justice reform currently comes from a whole career spent as an advocate for victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and child abuse and neglect. And so I have seen what this, how hard it is for victims to safely navigate a system and the role that trauma plays in women and children's lives and the whole cycle of violence and poverty. So I do think that, and I respect the fact that we have an independently elected prosecutor and sheriff, but I think as commissioners, we can set a tone from the top, take a leadership position, and help to shepherd through some ongoing criminal justice reform. I think there are some wonderful things that Travis County is doing in a lot of our model courts, and I applaud that and want to see that happen. But we have got to be sure that in this county, victims of domestic violence and sexual assault get the justice and the safety that they deserve. And so I want to continue the work that's been happening, but we have got to have a collaborative approach with prosecutors, law enforcement, and advocates to really get to where we need to be in this county. I think we need to minimize incarceration, provide better indigent defense. We've started down that road at long last, but that will help lower the number of people, the total number of people in custody. Slightly over half of the people in our jail at any given time are there because they're awaiting trial. They haven't been convicted of anything. And so we need to continue the work that we're doing to decriminalize poverty and to help people be able to have jobs, rebuild their lives, get back on the right track. We need to continue the important work that Travis County has been doing for a long time around mental health and behavioral health services. I think one of the things we could do that would really improve that and ramp that up is to establish a behavioral health authority for Travis County in much the same way that we have a health authority, and so that we could improve the range of services that we are able to provide. And going back to the issue of working with victims and seeing the impacts of trauma on adult and child victims, I think that whether or not we build a new facility specifically for women who aren't incarcerated. And there are good people with lots of knowledge and experience on both sides of that issue, but whichever way that goes, we have absolutely got to improve the services that are being provided to women. We need to make sure that they are humane, that they are trauma-informed, because we know that what lands most women in jail is related to trauma and violence and abuse that they have suffered. And so we've got to make the services more equitable. The level of services that women get in terms of educational and job opportunities in jail is way less than what the men are receiving. So we need some equity there. And then we also need to make sure that all of the services that the women are provided are trauma-informed, that help them come out of jail able to restore their lives and the lives of their families and keep them on the right track and reduce recidivism.
Are we doing on time?
Probably got room for one more.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I'd like to ask about homelessness, the county's role in that. The City Council, obviously, is catching plenty of flak from up the street and from many quarters. So what would you, as a county commissioner, what would you advocate? What should the county do for its role in our homeless situation?
Well, I think one of the things that the county can do and has started doing is get involved in building affordable housing. So the county's first affordable housing facility is being constructed right now out on Airport, where the tax office currently is, that same parcel of land. So I think that's a very active and progressive step in the right direction for the county. I know that properties for additional affordable housing sites have been identified pretty much in every kind of quadrant of the county, including western Travis County out towards Bee Capes, where we have a huge issue around people who work there, can't afford to live there, and the cost and time involved in driving, transportation back and forth, is very costly. So I really applaud the efforts around the county being so actively involved in affordable housing and would want to continue to help shepherd those kinds of projects forward. This is another area where I think we could work with the city with those, we represent a lot of the same people. The City of Austin isn't the entirety of Travis County, but there is a very definite huge overlap. And so we could work with them on the short-term kinds of needs for, like, emergency housing, housing first. I think Community First Village out on the eastern part of the county, I've been a mobile Loews and Fishes volunteer for a long time, and that group, that community first grew out of that work. I think that's a wonderful model that I think they are building it in such a way that it is replicable, that it could be replicated other places. So I think that's something that we should investigate as well for the more emergency and short-term needs.
Precinct 3 accepts a Community First?
Well, Precinct 3 is really big and really, you know, Precinct 3 is 46% of the land mass of Travis County. And I think that there are, there would be concerns, and you would have some sort of the NIMBY, the not-in-my-backyard approach, and maybe it wouldn't be as huge a footprint as Community First currently has. But I think that sort of model of shorter-term emergency affordable housing with support services is an excellent model. And the other thing I love about it is that the people who live there are so hugely involved in the running of that community.
Obviously, this is something near and dear to my heart, and I would argue that Precinct 3 constituents have pretty much built Community First through their philanthropy and church work. I think the county needs to do two things. We need to beef up our investment in evidence-based practices. We know that when we take folks from the streets and get them into housing with health access to healthcare and support services, they stay housed over 85% of the time. We need to be a bigger player in supporting that work. The second thing we need to be, to do, is innovation. You guys have written many times about the Pay for Success Initiative that Austin-Travis County, you know, is on the brink of finishing, but it's hit a hiccup because of the lawsuit with Central Health. with Central Health and is sort of on hold, ready to go. But that kind of innovative work is what helped us end veteran homelessness. It helped Travis County through Echo's work secure a $5 million grant to end youth homelessness. And I'm very proud to tell you that just this week, HUD announced $10 million back to Echo through the community, so we were able to renew all of that work that we've been doing, and that is competitive and it's based on data. We need to believe the success happening in Austin and expand on that work. We don't need to go to other communities and see what they're doing. They're looking to Austin to solve this problem and lead in the country. We need to, you know, so I could stop right there, you know, but we know what to do. We need to do more of it. We, yeah, I applaud the affordable housing work the county is sort of dipping its toes in, but affordable housing alone does not end homelessness. That housing must be accessible to people who have been homeless, to people with criminal history, to people who don't have double the income, you know, in rents, to people who have raging mental health issues and addiction. Those are the folks we've left on the street that we need to find housing for.
So I've got two teenage daughters, and I think it's super important that, you know, they get outside their bubble. So we work with Angel House, which is right there at Caesar Chavez and I-35, and we go in and we serve. So one of the cool things about it is sometimes there's a lot of volunteers there, and we'll just walk around and just kind of talk to people. And what we all have found is that the majority of the people who are homeless downtown have mental health issues, and unfortunately, these mental health issues are brought on by an addiction to heroin that is being provided for them daily. I've owned houses in East Austin for 20 years, and I remember when I first bought there, and my wife's parents thought I was insane, you know, but I'm like, no, this is going to be the coolest place in Austin. And at Caesar Chavez in San Sabat, there was a prostitution ring going right across. Now, that's one of the coolest intersections in Austin now, but there was a prostitution ring there, and it's, you know, these are the things that, you know, we have to work through. Community first, I think, is just the best example of how to do things right. We took our kids there to volunteer. We picked rocks and, you know, and helped create the farmland where they did this. I mean, I don't see how you could pick a better place to learn how to do something right. Instead of giving somebody something, you know, let them feel like they earned it, you know? When you put them in places like that, and I do believe that there's room in Precinct three to do another one of those, I think every precinct should have a community first. You can give somebody a fish, or you can give someone a fishing pole. What do you think they're going to do better with?
Well, there are three main things that I see to address this, and it did come up a lot on the 10 months of block walking that I've done. One, we are, the county does bridge multiple municipalities, and we're also a bridge between the state and federal governments as well. And I'd like to work at all levels of government to achieve the kind of funding that we need to address this, which is helpful because when you run with these candidates, it's like going to band camp together. So the ones that move on to Congress and the state legislature, you already have a rapport, and I can build on the other congressional contacts I've made doing the advocacy for the disability community. One of the intersectional things about this is the county does have the power of the purse. And again, when we talk about people experiencing homelessness, we're already at the end of the continuum. We, I would like to make sure the county, when we award these multimillion-dollar contracts with companies, we make sure they are using best practices, that they pay their employees a fair wage, their employees have health services, like we pay the premiums at my nonprofit for 100% of the health insurance. Also, that they are protected on difficult jobs like construction, where they have third-party safety inspectors that we follow, OSHA, because if we pay people a living wage and then some, they are not going to be on that track to experiencing homelessness. I testified against Senate Bill 13 in this 2017 legislative session for the state, the Senate Business and Commerce Committee, because they wanted to go back to Davis, well, we want Davis Bacon Act, they wanted to not let municipalities set that $15 an hour wage. They wanted to go back to 725, which is close to 50%, and they want to get rid of third-party inspectors. Also, I'd like to follow the example of our Precinct three constable, Stacy Suits. He does a lot of work collaborating with the faith-based and nonprofit community in addressing the current homelessness situation. As the county, we can elevate the nonprofits and help them achieve these both private and government grants that they're seeking, and I'd like to put the spotlight on them because they're doing such a good job. The Pay for Success has received a lot of traction. One of the things I learned through following the hearings, it was like April 17th of last year with Central Health, the reason they hit a hiccup with them originally was because they wanted more transparency. They want to know exactly who is investing to pay for this, and then if they hit the metrics, then the county and the city and other folks would pay them back. They were concerned about high interest rates, it would be millions of dollars extra paid when, as an alternative, they might contract directly with the nonprofits. And as somebody who's run a nonprofit for a long time, we certainly would like to make things as streamlined as possible and be completely transparent and build this as efficiently as possible so taxpayers aren't paying interest to a financial institution for this type of a project.
How are we on time?
Five over.
I guess that's good. We appreciate your coming here, and we learned a lot. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you. You all asked a good question.
Oh, can we, are we going to get to do a closing remark? I'd like to.
We're out of time, unfortunately.
Well, it's pretty important.
Do you want to do a quick minute?
Yeah.
Quick minute?
Thank you.
One minute?
Yeah. As an experienced trial and appellate lawyer, I'm really aware of the importance of following laws and rules. And based on this, there's a matter about one of my opponents that I think's a concern that, and this is a Democratic primary, and I think it's something that Republicans would really focus on, and it could be to the detriment of the whole Democratic ticket. In 2011, the Texas Ethics Commission, which is where we turn in our financial reports, fined Velinda Bolton for violations that they found in six, out of six of her campaign finance reports that she filed from January to 2008 to July 2009. They included inaccuracies about reporting contributions, inflating the contributions by a total of over $85,000, more than were received, failure to disclose full names of contributors, failure to disclose job titles and occupations of contributors who donated $500 or more, and failure to adequately disclose the purpose of expenditures. She did pay the $2,000 fine on April 14, 2011. This is a copy of the signed order, and this is a chart of the different reports and the rules that were violated, and this is just a bit of a summary. Ethics do matter. We all have an ethical responsibility to follow laws and rules, and if some people don't, they lose their meaning. Election laws should be researched and clearly understood, especially by candidates, instead of, you know, making up an excuse why they weren't followed, which is simple. Fiduciary responsibility matters. This office has a tremendous fiduciary responsibility. The Travis County Commissioners Court oversees a budget of $1.2 billion, and people entrust you with their money, whether it's a campaign contribution or your tax dollars, so it's vital that you're careful how you handle it. Integrity and trustworthiness become an issue when the Texas Ethics Commission issues an order against a candidate for multiple violations, especially when they find violations of inflated political contributions. This is easy for anybody to find. If you just Google "Velinda Bolton complaints," it pops right up. And the Democrats really want to keep the seats that we won and flip the others that we're trying to turn over so we can solve a lot of these problems that we've talked today, talked about today. So if you have a candidate with documented ethics problems, it's going to spill over and make the whole ticket toxic. It's going to be something that Republicans are going to focus on instead of the issues that matters for people. So I'm, this is not a pleasant thing to talk about, but I'm glad that it's come to light now, so once we get to the general.
Let Velinda respond.
Okay, I'm happy to respond to that. Yes, there were complaints, and we corrected all of the reports in a timely fashion. I think it's important for people to know that the Texas Ethics Commission is not compliance-driven, it's complaint-driven. And so that means that not everyone's reports get the same close examination. Your reports only get examined if somebody is scrolling through your records and looking, and, which is what was happening at the time. It was well-documented in the press at the time that there were folks that were doing this and making very targeted reports against their political opposition. And many of the mistakes were, so you report on where your contributions came from and who they were from.
It's due today, the big report.
It's due today. The big report is due today. And so you have to go with the information that was given to you. And so if somebody gives you a wrong address or they've since moved, then that could be a finding. If somebody tells you, well, this is from the ABC PAC, but their official DBA name is the ABCD PAC, then that could be a finding. Some of these are very simple and easily fixable problems, which we did. We went back, we got a clean Bill of Health after that from the Ethics Commission. I pushed hard for an Ethics Commission that would be compliance-driven, so that when every candidate turned in a report, everyone would know that they were accurate, and that that would be done across the board so that everyone is treated fairly and that are the same. And that is not the situation now. I think it's worth noting that when our first report was due on this campaign, June 30th, Ms. Sultis' report was late because she filed it with the wrong entity. It needed to be filed with the county. It was filed with the state instead. So it was late, which is easily an ethics complaint that somebody could levy as well. So I, I think that we did everything we could to file every report with as much accuracy, transparency, and timeliness as we possibly could, and when any mistakes were found, we fixed them. And I think that's the main thing that I have to say about that.
Thank you. Thanks for your time. I believe I am the best-suited leader to help take Travis County from sort of a boots-and-hats county to an urban county. We're going to do that by working together across the region. I, you know, have raised a family, as I mentioned earlier, in the northwest part, but spent my whole adult career working on behalf of families across this community. I believe I know the issues. I'm supported by the movers and shakers and players and voters who want to get stuff done, and I'm ready to work hard, and I think it's time to elect someone like me. Thanks.
Well, I was going to go to lunch after this, but I think I'm going to spend an extra hour on my first finance thing. Yeah, good gravy. So when I first started to do this, I had a good friend of mine that I have done work with, so I probably had 50 people or so give me money in the City of Austin over the last 20 or 30 years for different real estate deals and developments, and I challenge anybody to find a person who didn't make money, because my job, what I do, is based off of simple things, right? I have a project, I go out, I ask people to give me money. If I get all of their money back, I make money. If I don't, I don't make anything, right? That's a lot like what we're doing here. Let me just flip this around real quick on you, all right? Let's just say y'all are hiring me, and this isn't an election, okay? Right? Because really, in the end, you are hiring this person. We're all going, we all have to be responsible for whoever it is, okay? And we all have qualifications. I'm not a lawyer, I already said that. I haven't passed any legislation. I am not going to the White House, nor do I want to go to the White House. I want to build roads. I want to build infrastructure. If you're hiring me right now, and if you're looking at who's qualified to do this job, who's going to be at this job, who has no aspirations to do anything but this job, you're going to hire me. Thank you.
Can I make a final statement that's not just in response?
Sure.
So when I was in the legislature and had the opportunity to represent a whole swath of western Travis County, I learned a lot about what it means to live outside of a municipality and to know that your county government is your local government. And I fell in love with county government. Everyone in Texas lives in a county, regardless of whether or not you live in a municipality or a little tiny town, you live in a county, and county government serves you. And I think in this race, I have the combined experience between my nonprofit work at the local, state, national, and international level, my proven track record of building coalitions, often unlikely coalitions, to tackle big issues, and my experience with the legislature, having been in elected office, having dealt with big, enormous budgets, having had to take very public positions on very controversial issues. I think that I am the person best suited at this time to be your next Travis County Commissioner for Precinct three. So thank you.